All this meeting to order, uh, this is an open meeting of the Hickman Nebraska Governing Body. The City of Hickman abides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is on display in this meeting room as required by Nebraska state law. Notice of meeting and copies of this agenda have been publicly posted prior to the meeting at the Hickman City Hall, Hickman US Post Office, Ustop Market and City of Hickman website. There's a participant sign in sheet available and disclosure of meeting recording process notice posted. All individuals requesting to be registered agenda speakers must fill out a registered speaker card and submit to the recording clerk. The mayor or presiding meeting officer reserves the right to deny this request or will call you to the podium when your agenda item is ready to be heard. Presentations if allowed may be limited to five minutes per person. Please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record and the agenda topic you wish to speak upon in a professional manner. Public hearing testimonies may be limited to five minutes per person. All individuals requesting to hand out documents to the city council members must deliver them directly to the city clerk for distribution. The city council may vote to go an executive closed session on any agenda item as allowed by Nebraska state law. The governing body may be excused and reenter the city council meeting room at any time after reconvening open session. If everyone will stand before the stage.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, if you call roll please.
Mayor Karen.
Here.
Noran.
Here.
Wagner.
Eric.
Zeman.
Here.
Johoda.
Here.
Cole Wiki.
Here.
Borker.
Here.
Alright, Mayor Communications, I have none at this time, so we will move right into the consent agenda. Item five A is approval of September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting minutes. Everybody's had them in your packets to go over. To look over, any corrections? Alright. Seeing's none, we will move to item five B, Claims and Accounts Payable Report. And with that, you also have that in your electronic packet. And I don't know, Michelle, you wanna go over anything or Kelly?
No additions since Friday.
Um, I will make a couple comments on um, one of the line items for leak association of risk management, uh, otherwise known as ALARM, that is the Sixty's Insurance Agency. So the annual renewal, that's with that discount that you guys have voted on a couple months ago. And then the insurance policy amendments, um. We have, every year I go over the city's inventory assets and the policies and whatnot. And so with this one, we went through and noticed that there were several items not um, under coverage that we needed to add. So some of the items were also removed, um, the two thousand fourteen Equinox was still on there, so they removed that. Our, one of our portable generators for the city wells because we're ordering the new ones has been removed. We had additional insurance for porta potties in the summertime, um, because a few years ago we did have an issue with vandalism. Uh, we no longer need that addition on there, so that was dropped. Then we added on the new Z-Max spray with the foam marker and the extra tank, uh, stump grinder, the two new generators for well number three and well number four. Snow plow attachments, um, for the two thousand twenty-five Chevy Silverado truck. The twelve-foot cage snowstorm system for the Kubota tractor. We relabeled, uh, the mowers because they were missing a couple of them, which we've discovered with our last mower claim. So they do have all of the mowers with the model numbers and serial numbers and appropriate values. And then the, also the new, um, X-Mars stand-up series, uh, mower. And then we also needed to add, um, the ADA playground equipment and the new shade that was, uh, is going to be put down at the park. So we needed to add that park equipment as well.
Alright, any other questions for Kelly or Michelle?
That health insurance, that one time, is that your rate premium, about nine thousand?
Monthly. That's monthly, but it includes, um, employer paid and also employee paid premiums.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Ms. Zeman, second by Mr. Wagner to approve the consent agenda. Michelle, if you call roll please.
Noran.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johoda.
Yes.
Cole Wiki.
Yes.
Borker.
Yes.
Alright, item six, Proclaimations, Presentations, Appointment, Affirmations and Introductions, we have none. So with that, we will jump right into reports and item seven A is Planning Commission Report.
So your planning commission members had a meeting on October seventh. They had two public hearings, one for the request from Mr. Collin Post for conditional use permit to operate an automotive and machinery repair shop in the C-one downtown, uh, district which is located at one oh five Locust Street. We also have a public hearing for that this evening. And there was also a public hearing on annexation for Adminisates Lot Two. Um, and the city council's public hearing for that will be coming to you on, um, October twenty-eighth. And with new business, um, your planning commission did approve a motion, um, to recommend approval of the conditional use permit from Mr. Collin Post to operate an automotive and machinery repair shop at one oh five Locust Street, um, subject to the following conditions. That one valid for twelve months, council may lift upon renewal after consistence, uh, consistent compliance. Number two, no outdoor storage of vehicles, parts or equipment. Number three, noise and traffic must not exceed nuisance levels or cause congestion. And number four, issued to Mr. Collin Post for his business at one oh five Locust Street and is non-transferable to any other person, location, business or corporation. And those motions of recommendation were approved, um, in the resolution for later on at this meeting. They also made a recommendation to approve the annexation, um, for Adminisates Lot Two as well. And again, that'll come to you on the October twenty eighth city council meeting.
Alright, any questions for Kelly? Seeing's done, we will go to item seven B, Lancaster County Sheriff's Office Report. With that, I think we have a new introduction.
Could you call up the microphone?
Yep.
Alright. Well, some of you probably don't know me, I've only been with LSO for about a year now, uh, my name's Colton Allen. I worked for the Hall County Sheriff's Office for three years before coming here, so. It's not first year, but, um, bear with me, I, I've never done this before. So if you want a little more information on some of these calls, I, I've been in courts for the last six months, so it's been a little bit, but I'm excited to get back on the road. Hickman's the place I wanna be, so, um, yeah, I'm from Aurora, Nebraska, so a little way, little bit of ways, but. So I'm gonna go through some of these that Olivia told me to read off the calls, let me know if you want a little more, more information or. Guys, I wasn't, I'm not familiar with some of these calls.
That's fine, we'll get through it.
Looks like September sixth, uh, there was a disturbance call and a reporter suspicious person. September eighth, looks like OPS other, means a, another agency assisting another agency. Parking complaint. September tenth miscellaneous other, like I said, I don't know exactly what happened there, but a medical call. September eleventh, looks like someone was arrested on a warrant and there was a medical call. September thirteenth, there was a commercial alarm. September fourteenth, there was a narcotics investigation and a couple miscellaneous other complaints. September fifteenth, traffic other, I'm not sure what happened on that one, but it could be a pursuit, is my assumption. Some, September sixteenth, it looks like there's a couple of medical calls and a couple of natural deaths. September twenty-third suspicious, suspicious person complaint and miscellaneous other. September twenty-fourth, there was a fraud by deception. September twenty-fifth, looks like someone was on a traffic stop, arrested on a warrant, suspended license. Also a criminal mischief and animal dog bite resulting in injury. September twenty-sixth, another medical call. September twenty-seventh, another medical call. September twenty-ninth, a reporter suspicious person. September thirtieth, disturbance other, it's a dog at large, it was a residential alarm went off. October first, a couple of false alarms, two different addresses. October third miscellaneous other, uh, another parking complaint. October fourth, just a couple disturbances. October sixth, another medical call. October seventh, uh, property damage, hit and run. And October eighth, another disturbance other, so. Some of those disturbance others, I, I, I couldn't tell you since I wasn't actually on some of those, but.
Looks like you're thirty-nine for the month.
Do you have any questions? Thirty-nine?
Yeah. Says account thirty-nine, so I imagine that's for the month. Alright, so you're, uh, we look forward to seeing you call in, Colton, and, uh, if you have any questions, uh, make sure you ask Kelly.
Alright, sounds good. Do you have any questions for me? So I'm not much of a public speaker, but.
When's my meeting tomorrow?
I actually don't start until Thursday.
Thursday, so Thursday when you come to Hickman, just come visit me at the office.
Yeah, Olivia messaged me and said, hey, since you're the new Hickman deputy, would you wanna go to the meeting? And I said, yeah, I'm coming to the meeting, so.
Throw on your mic then.
Yeah, don't get, if you have any questions, let me know or talk to me, I'd wanna help, so.
Alright, well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, with that, we will go to seven C, uh, Community Center and Activities Report.
So in the Community Center report, um, we're reporting on the twenty-seven rental inquiries, couple of tours, eighty-two participants for open gym time, ninety-four for open pickleball play and fifty-five participants for the adults pickup basketball. Uh, meeting rooms A and B, which you're in right now, is four nonprofit meetings, soccer coaches meeting, uh, family reunion and a bridal shower. The multipurpose room had the pickleball open plays, pickup basketball, a rehearsal dinner and also a birthday party. And then upcoming events listed there are the pickleball open play times, pickup basketball times. Hickman Area Economic Development Association, Trigger Tweet on the Trail is Thursday, October thirtieth from six PM to eight PM. And it is in a new location this year in Hickman Main Park. Um, and then the Hickman Arts Council's Maker Market is Saturday, November fifteenth from ten to three here in the community center. No damage to report, however, as a reminder, our HVAC system will be down for two weeks in October for some repairs. So there will not be any open gym or open play times during that time. And no new rentals will be accepted as well. Use soccer games Monday, Tuesday, um, and we do have a recreational programs homepage on the website that is new, um, with a calendar of events there for everybody, do you?
Alright, any questions for Kelly? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the reports, second.
Okay, thank you. Alright, motion was made by Mr. Norm, second by Mr. Quickie to approve the reports as presented. Michelle, if you call roll please.
Noran.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johoda.
Yes.
Cole Wiki.
Yes.
Borker.
Yes.
Alright, item eight, uh, public hearings, the purpose of the public hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment on a request from Collin Post for a conditional use permit to operate an automotive and machinery repair shop in the C-one downtown Commercial Limited District on property legally described as Block Twenty-two, Block Four. Uh, X-W twenty, uh, Hickman Edition, commonly known as one oh five Locust Street, Hickman, Nebraska. I will now open the public hearing to consider the application for a conditional use permit. All interested persons wishing to speak in regard to the conditional use permit, uh, please come to the podium, clearly state your name, address for the record in a professional manner. Uh, any persons speak, wanna speak in support, uh, now's your time.
I will speak in support, uh, my name is Collin Post. So just to kinda tell you more what I'm doing there, it's a Harley Davidson specific motorcycle shop. I went to school at SEC, graduated with honors there for the power sports program. I worked at Frontier Harley for ten years and decided to go out on my own, so there I am, in support.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Uh, any persons wishing to speak in opposition? Uh, any persons wishing to speak in a neutral capacity? Uh, being none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Norm, second by Ms. Zeman to close this public hearing. Michelle, if you call roll please.
Noran.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johoda.
Yes.
Cole Wiki.
Yes.
Borker.
Yes.
Alright, unfinished business, we have none. So we will move to Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash sixteen, conditional use permit for Collin, Collin Post Automotive and Machinery Repair at one oh five Locust Street. I think you have the resolution for you. Kelly?
Yeah, so the resolution was drafted and approved for use by your city attorney and of course the, um, conditions of the planning commission that they recommended are listed there as number one, two, three and four.
Any comments?
Is this the building, the white building across the street?
No, it's just down the street.
Down this way?
Yeah.
Next to the bar.
Okay.
So is this? We, you're talking the old fire station, right?
Yes.
Yeah, south.
South. We approved somebody to restore cars, right?
That is correct, so earlier this year we did have another CUP that is very similar to this situation. However, he had a change in his plans and has moved out and then Mr. Post is the new, uh, renter of the property. Um, I would like to engage in the motorcycle repairs, which falls under the auto repair category.
Two questions I have on this, number two, are we wanting point two to be in there for overnight? Just 'cause I'm assuming he's gonna want, and maybe this is. You know, if you've got, um, vehicles parked on the drive portion while you're working on something else inside, that's not necessarily the issue, but it's more overnight, is that what we're getting at with that?
No, it's at all times.
At all times?
Yes, and that was a similar condition to the prior conditional use permit.
Okay, that was my follow-up to that, okay. And then on point four, what would be, and I don't know if this is, maybe this is more of a question than an answer, or than, uh, to you than it is to us, but if he were to want to continue to do this and put the business in an LLC, would he then have to come back because of the wording of this?
Yes.
Because then it would be an entity as opposed to just the individual himself.
I already have an LLC established for this business, so I don't know.
Okay, so this is just for, okay.
I don't know if that does need to get changed or whatever, uh, okay, I'm making sure.
No, that answer's perfect.
And then I will say, as far as the point two there, the outdoor storage and stuff, we talked about that at the, the last meeting. And basically what it, what we ended on was as long as nothing was parked overnight out front of the building, that would be alright because that's my access into the building.
Right.
So some of the parking out there to move bikes around, kinda get things figured out, they said that was okay, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty, twenty-five dash sixteen.
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Wagner, uh, second by Mr. Borker to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash sixteen. Any more comments, questions? Michelle, if you call roll please.
Noran.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johoda.
Yes.
Cole Wiki.
Yes.
Borker.
Yes. Alright, welcome.
Thank you.
And item ten B, Ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash twelve, uh, authorizing issuance of general obligation sewer bonds, Series two thousand twenty-five. And I think we have Scott with us. You're up, Scott.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Scott Keen with Piper Sandler, with me tonight is Bill Arth, my partner here in the Lincoln office. As the mayor mentioned, I'm here tonight to talk about the ordinance that would authorize the issuance of general obligation sewer bonds to take out the maturing bands that the council issued last January, February. Those bands, those bond anticipation notes mature, uh, this coming February fifteenth. So we are moving forward with, with this ordinance and with your consideration tonight to go ahead and issue the bonds, the permanent bonds, to take out those notes. As you can see in the summary, at this point in time, uh, at current interest rates, we would expect that the bonds would be issued in the amount of approximately four million one hundred and forty thousand dollars. As a reminder, there was four million twenty-five thousand dollars of notes that were issued last February. Again, with a fifteen-year amortization, we would end up with a true interest cost in today's market of about four point oh seven percent. Bonds, like your other bond issues, become callable after five years, which means five, once we get to the five-year anniversary date, you have the ability to either take cash to pay off the bonds early in any amount or have the ability to issue refunding bonds, uh, to achieve lower interest rates. So we'll keep monitoring that for the, for the city as well. Again, at today's interest rates, the preliminary, uh, average annual debt service is just over three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. If we, if the council approves the ordinance tonight, we would move forward and, and plan to get to market within the next couple of weeks and have tentatively for this analysis, set a redemption date of December second. So we'd be taking out the old notes on December second and delivering the proceeds of the bond issue on that same date, so that they're not outstanding at the same time. If we were to pay off the notes on December second, that would be in the amount of, of four million sixty-eight thousand sixty-eight dollars. So that's our goal, is to try to get the bonds to market as quickly as we can. Interest rates have been falling in the last few weeks, so we wanna try to take advantage of that as best we can. There are certain parameters within the ordinance, uh, that I wanted to point out. One is that the, the, you're authorizing specific officers to approve the final terms and conditions of the bond sale as long as they meet certain parameters. One is that the par amount of the bonds, the principal amount of bonds cannot exceed four point three million dollars. The true interest cost, which in today's market is again about four point oh seven, cannot exceed five point two five percent. And the under-earthers discount, the fee for Piper Sandler to act as, to structure the issue and bring it to market and get the bond sold, cannot exceed point eight five percent. Again, with your consideration tonight, we'd be looking to try to market the bonds before the end of the month and then, uh, uh, deliver the proceeds on December second. Shortly after the sale of the bonds, we would be asking, uh, administration to process a call notice. We are obligated, the city is obligated under the issuance of the notes to provide those holders with a thirty-day notice. So we'd be working on processing that the day after or the day of the sale of the bonds, once we know we've got a good sale. Processing that note, that thirty-day notice and starting that clock for the bonds to be redeemed on, or the notes to be redeemed on December second. If this process speeds up by a week or slows down by a week, we'd be adjusting those dates, but that's the game plan for right now. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Yes?
Um, in your experience, do you anticipate that, uh, true interest cost to go up if we get closer to November?
You know, it, it's an interesting question, there, there isn't, there typically isn't a real correlation with the election necessarily driving interest rates. Presidential elections can always be a little trickier just because oftentimes there's a lot of rhetoric from one side or the other that might affect the, the bond market, but this year we're not expecting anything like that. The Federal Reserve is, as you know, at the last meeting, uh, did lower the Fed funds rate by twenty-five basis points. The market is betting that they will, will do that again at the October meeting, uh, that's next week. And then likely again at the December meeting. The interesting thing is while the Fed, which again is dr, is governing what the overnight borrowing rate is between banks. And that has an impact on the short end of the yield curve, the shorter maturities. But actually after the Fed took action at the last meeting, for a period of time, long-term interest rates rose. So there is some concern in the bond market that, that the Fed may be too aggressive in lowering interest rates that could ignite inflation. And that's what long bondholders fear the most, is, is runaway inflation. So we, we don't wanna necessarily try to time ourselves around the, the, the Fed funds, uh, the, the, the Fed's Open Market Committee meeting. But just moving forward and being prepared to get to market as quickly as we can is, I think, what will benefit us.
Alright, any other questions for Scott?
I'll introduce Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve and ask the clerk read it by title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twelve and ordinance authorizing the issuance of the general obligation sewer bonds, Series twenty twenty-five of the City of Hickman, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed four million three hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of the four thousand twenty-five thousand outstanding principal amount of bond anticipation notes, Series twenty twenty-five, dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Prescribing certain terms and form of such bonds and providing for the setting of certain terms and form of such bonds. Providing for the levying taxes to pay the interest on and principle of such bonds and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form and relating matters.
Alright, thank you. Uh, any other questions? Entertaining a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive three reading rule on Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
Second.
Kelly?
Yes.
So what happens if this gets delayed?
Um, I think as Mr. Keen had noted earlier, um, you know, the interest rates could go up or down.
Right.
I think it's beneficial, he said they have been lowered lately and he did recommend we pass it as soon as possible so we can establish that lower rate that we have right now.
Alright. With that, we have a motion by Mr. Wagner, second by Mr. Norm to waive the three reading rule for Ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash twelve. Michelle, if you call roll please.
Noran.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johoda.
No.
Cole Wiki.
Yes.
Borker.
No.
Alright, three reading rule has failed, so, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Ordinance twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash twelve on first reading.
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Mr. Wagner, second by Ms. Zeman to approve Ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash twelve on the first reading. Any other comments, questions? Michelle, if you call roll please.
Noran.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johoda.
Yes.
Cole Wiki.
Yes.
Borker.
Yes.
Alright, this will be on.
Quick question for Scott. So what would be the date? Since this is all Greek to me, sorry.
Sure.
If, if we were to approve this tonight, so you, would there be a specific date that you would lock this or you're just gonna, you just watch it in November? Is that how that works?
Well, if we, if we waived the three re-readings tonight, we would have been in the market likely October twenty-ninth or thirtieth, something like that. But with the three readings, we'll, uh, get to market likely then early, uh, mid-November, probably shortly after the third reading. So we'll still be settling the bond issue then probably the middle of December or third week of December, something like that. Would be the timeline that we'd adjust to, but I'll. Would be the timeline that we'd adjust to, but I'll coordinate with Kelly on board meeting, council meeting dates and so forth. Thank you.
All right. Item ten C, considerate, consideration of request from Mr. Matt Barber of Fund LLC to extend the landscape plan on the apartment development located at ninety six fifty Hickman Road, Hickman, Nebraska. Kelly?
Yes, so on Monday, October sixth, uh, we did receive an email from Mr. Matt Barber, owner of Fund LLC, and he said, please accept this email as a written request to extend the landscape plan on the apartment development located at nine six five zero Hickman Road, Hickman, Nebraska, six eight three seven two. Due to heavy rains, the excavating and infrastructure work was delayed on several occasions. A one-year extension is requested. And please contact me with any questions or concerns. And of course, Mr. Barber was invited to the meeting, and he does send his apologies to those in attendance and the elected officials. He did have something else scheduled for this evening, unfortunately, so he was unable to make it. In the past, the city has given extensions and has granted, at least the first request for extensions. We've given extensions on nuisance abatements, zoning violations, building permit deadlines. We've also, in other cases, amended subdivision agreements to, because the needs of the developer had changed, and so the city has done amendments to subdivision agreements as well. We've modified ghost plating. We changed one of our amended sub agreements in Salt Creek Reserve to add for a public water distribution that was different than what was intended when the final plat was passed. So, the city council in the past has made exceptions when a developer does make a request for an extension or an amendment. And in this case, Mr. Barber is asking for a twelve month extension for the landscape plan, which is item nine A of the subdivision agreement.
So, Kelly, on, uh, I was reading, uh, so it talks about, um, bullet line number nine.
Uh huh.
You'll find a customer, I do.
Right.
So, earlier the two, either the final plat or the occupancy.
That's correct.
When is the final plat approved?
Uh, the final plat was approved in in subdivision agreement here on December, at the end of the signature dates.
So, the sub, the final plat goes along with the sub division agreement, that way?
Yes, yep, they're adopted simultaneously.
So, that was in twenty four? Is that right?
Two thousand twenty three.
Oh, it was twenty three.
Um, we did have a filing problem, though, with the final plat and the subdivision agreement, so it wasn't filed until later. Initially, the documents were taken to Lancaster County Register of Needs, um, and because the exhibits didn't match the language, they had actually requested the employee of the city cross out certain parts of the subdivision agreement, which in my experience negates those sections, which were not negated by city council by vote. So, then the document was refiled with the correct exhibits to match the language in the subdivision agreement that was approved by city council, and so it was refiled correctly.
Looks, looks like it was approved on the fourteenth of November, two thousand twenty three.
I see it was twenty four.
And then the, then it was, uh, and then again on the twenty sixth of February, two thousand twenty four.
Probably two or three readings.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, was it twenty four or twenty three?
Well, what I'm looking at says twenty sixth of February, two thousand twenty four.
Well, that's when we signed it.
That's when we signed it.
Michelle, do you have that date on that final approval?
Of the plat?
Yeah, I can go back and do a past meeting here, too.
So, in theory, you say it wasn't. We approved it. We had to redo it, right, before it was filed?
I believe it was December twelfth of two thousand twenty three on my notes, but I will go back here.
Either way, that's, I mean, it's three month change, basically, right? We're saying December of twenty three versus February twenty four.
Uh, let's see, first reading was passed of that ordinance on November twenty eighth. It was introduced November fourteenth. Public hearings were November fourteenth. Planning commission was October third of two thousand twenty three. And yeah, December twelfth. I'm putting those minutes up here really quick. Well, it's one. There it is, unfinished business from December twelfth, two thousand twenty three. Sometimes signatures follow on different dates with notarization and everything.
December twelfth, you said?
Yeah.
I get, I mean, why would you wanna plant all those trees if nothing's buried? That's just gonna be in the way.
You what?
Why would you, I mean, I I get why he's wanting this. Why would you plant all those trees if I'm looking at the landscape plan? When, I mean, yeah, the dirt work's done, but it's no, I mean, why would you wanna work around that? I wouldn't. I see, I mean, I see where he's getting at. You look at this map, man, he's got trees all over.
Well, I think they were just, uh, the ones buffering the homes is what he, what he said he would plant right away. And I know he wants.
Yeah, I get it.
Uh, Walt, I know you filled a request to speak. Why don't we get that done?
I didn't, I didn't think you were gonna let me. I have a copy of the ordinance and the resolution if you'd like it.
We have. Oh, we got it.
Resolution was passed on November fourteenth. The ordinance was passed and signed, I'm sorry, Walt Nelson, eight two five East Ninth, Hickman, Nebraska. Thank you. Anyway, the ordinance was signed on the December second, twenty twenty three. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for orchestrating our meeting with our neighbors. Uh, I, all my neighbors are happy that you and Kelly and Heidi and several of the council members were present. They commented after that that they enjoyed talking to you, came away with a feeling that people cared about us. I think Hickman could do with more of those types of meetings where the populace sees you and doesn't have to come down here in a formal, uh, setting. Most of my neighbors are at kids' activities. Perhaps you're missing grand, grandkids and kids' activities as well. I know there's a concert and singing at the Norris today, so they are anxious to watch this proceedings on YouTube on Friday, and I appreciate that we have the YouTube. People that want to get the facts can get it readily. My neighbors and I attended every planning commission meeting that was there, every council meeting that discussed this topic. I think Councilman Colwicki probably sat in on the planning commission and now gets the pleasure of sitting in on the council meetings. But at both venues, we expressed two major concerns. One of them was we wanted our sa, our streets safe so that our kids could play. We asked for no public access from chicory into this subdivision. The developers' representatives put together a soft approach to the, to the subdivision so that a fire could get in there, emergency personnel could get in there, and we appreciate that. We asked that construction vehicles not use chicory for an access. We don't want cement trucks there. We don't want excess traffic. It's a residential area. Secondly, we asked for a plant buffer between our houses. We asked that the plants be planted before construction began so that the plants could prosper and grow to maturity. At the time, we thought the existing mature trees, which were fully buffering our houses from the subdivision, we thought those were going to stay. What our purpose was is that this planting would fill in the gaps and so that we could have some privacy in our backyard. The council passed the two resolutions, like I said, on November fourteenth. The ordinance was passed on December twelfth. January of this year, we asked for a copy of the developers' agreement. What was presented to us was, did not address our concerns. There was no mention of the planting. There was nothing in there that we value. We asked staff to look into it. They said they would investigate. Six weeks later, we got a copy that you have in your electronic file today, and that, I think, is accurate. One of the things that I learned in our meeting that I did not know is that we regularly grant extensions to developers' agreements. I did not know this. I wonder if the city could supply us with a number of times that this has happened. Basically, going back to the building over here, the apartments over here, Terrace View, the new one that's on the other side, and as well as ours. Is this something that regularly happens? I was not aware of it. If you would look at your electronic packages, I'd direct you to page three of that document.
Walt, you're about creature five minutes here, so.
There's no five minute requirement to talk at this meeting, is there?
Got a five minute request.
I didn't put five minutes request.
That's what was stated at the meeting, at the beginning of the meeting for agenda registered speakers. Go ahead and finish up, but just know that we had, we limit five minutes.
Well, but you understand, we have concerns. So, anyway, on page three, one G, it says that the developer will plant vegetation as opposed to fencing. Then I direct your attention to page three and four, item nine A and B. It says a subdivision will, within two years, a final approval by city council, which was December twenty twenty three. It does not say two years after the developer starts moving dirt. It says two years after the signing of that ordinance. The reason for that is we want some kind of protection between us and the subdivision. You, you folks that were there know what we're living with. Our quality of life has been depreciated. When you walk out the back door of some of our houses, that's all you see is that big open field where we used to have trees and a buffer there. We are opposed to granting the extension unless we get some alternative to our privacy concerns. We are in favor of the development, developer agreeing to construct an eight foot privacy fence along the entire north section of this development between our properties. If he would do that, if he would agree to do that, ninety percent of our concerns would be answered. The planting can wait. Mr. Wagner mentioned that he wouldn't wanna move around trees if he was doing construction. I don't think I would either. I wouldn't want trees planted in December anyway. But the reason we lobbied for that, and it's in the builder's agreement, developer's agreement, is we wanted the buffer to be there when they started habitating those departments. Ask yourself if you would like the quality of life that we are faced with. If somebody stripped the entire backyard of yours and left you with an open field, how would you feel? It's not a good thing.
All right, Walt. Walt, thank you. All right. Any comments from the council?
Somebody you met in presenting a discussion with Barber about privacy fence, or did that come up in discussion?
It came up in discussion, and Mr. Barber did visit staff at City Hall after the neighborhood discussion. But nothing has come of that because there is no requirement for a fence structure at this time.
I think Mr. Barber was open to putting a fence up, a construction fence. Uh, I know of some of the concerns were the mowing, you know, the the drop off, and I think he was for putting up some kind of fencing to.
The visual construction fence.
So, they know the line where the drop off is, so I think, uh, Mr. Barber was open to that. At least that's what he said that night.
And that could be what, chain, I mean, what, like chain link or, or temporary?
No, just like the plastic snow fence, the orange fence.
Yeah, temporary.
The orange, the orange, uh, where you've got a definite, uh, line of where, where it is.
I have a couple of questions. One, if this isn't approved, then what's his option? This was supposed to be done by November, right, correct?
Mm-hmm.
What's his option if we don't approve it?
Um, the option would be to get the city attorney involved and, and with the developer, and there would be probably some other fees to take the developer to court for the provisions.
Um, the second one is the timeframe. He's requested a year.
Yes.
What are some of the, uh, I don't know if we can compare it. To me, a year seems like a long time.
It does, and I think in in informal, in the informal settings and discussions that we've had outside of the city council meeting times, it's more of, he's gonna get it in, but just wants to put it in the sprint time.
Is there a way we can amend this to like a six month thing? And just that way, you hold him to it, say that this needs to be done by spring, so these guys?
His request is for twelve months, but if your motion preference is to give him until X amount of date and time instead of a full year, that's up to your discretion.
What was the date, or am I missing the date on here that he wanted, that when does the year supposed to take effect from?
December twelfth.
December twelfth.
December twelfth, so it would be June twelfth, if we gave him six months.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I mean, I understand the concerns. I was there. I've I've seen it. And I also understand some of the challenges, but I just think a year is too long. I I would make a motion to amend that to six months and just hold him to it and say, hey, we're we're giving you this grace, six months, let's get it done, and hopefully we can get.
So, your motion would be then to grant a six month extension and not a twelve month extension?
Are you, just to be clear, are you, are you making that motion, or you're just, it's still a discussion point?
Well, I can.
I just wanna, I just wanna be clear on.
Yeah, I will make the motion to grant a six month extension to the, uh, to the request from Matt Barber.
And what was the date, June twenty third, you said?
June twelfth.
Twelfth.
June twelfth, twenty twenty six is when it needs to be there.
You can say it's June thirty, just to get that full month of planning done.
June thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure that makes sense.
Yeah, June thirtieth would be the date, June thirtieth, twenty twenty six was, is the date that that needs to be done.
All right.
Any discussion?
Is there a sec?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
You can't after seven yet. All right, so the motion was made by Mr. Drohoda, seconded by Ms. Zeeman for the consideration of requests from Mr. Matt Barber Fund LLC to extend the landscape plan on the apartment development located at ninety-six fifty Hickman Road to the date of June twelve, two thousand twenty six, thirty.
June thirty.
Sorry, I did have that written down, can't read my writing. Uh, of two thousand twenty six. Is there any more discussion, comments?
Do we wanna do anything with the fencing? Can that be, um?
I don't know if we can direct that though, right?
We can't, no, it's not required. Our zoning regulations, um subdivision regulations, municipal codes.
Am I, is something he would like to do just to uh per the request of the citizens? Per residents?
So, quick question, when you, the motion at hand directs me to do the landscape plantings.
Hmm.
Do we need to specify just on the north side? We don't.
I think that would be generous if the motion is amended from the on the right.
I mean, that's the concern from what I'm hearing, right?
Yes, because that would leave for the issue of the problem.
Cause I mean, you, you got all this other stuff in here, we don't, you don't, I mean.
Well, that's a good point too, because that's.
I would wanna make him plant all this other stuff, and I assume even, I mean, this goes down past Chicory. So how does it, you need to go further to the west or not? To satisfy the homeowner.
Yeah, I think that's what, yeah, there's a, T on the left, yeah.
Yeah.
Or down here, oh, those ones on the circle, I forget about those, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't, I mean, I guess we, if we could specify that in the request.
Okay. Well, that was the issue, right?
Yeah, that's the issue, that's their concern.
Concern. Presenting, none of these other, I, I mean, I don't know how many of these is, you know, but I don't think we wanna make him plant these in here just because they're, they're gonna be in the way.
Just along the north side.
Huh?
Just along the north side.
Yeah, along the property.
Yeah.
I might advise you just to keep the motion as is, um instead of piecing it off, um just because what about, then he's out of context with the rest of the landscaping if it's only the north side.
That, that would give you my question, yeah.
Of what?
He would be out of compliance if you only did a motion for only him to do the north side of the landscape plan and not the rest of it, so then.
We just did an extension to the north.
Oh, I got you.
Cause I, I.
Then you wouldn't be giving the courtesy of an extension to the rest of the landscape planning.
I got you.
Yeah, and he knows, he knows what the issue is or what the law it wants, so.
He does, he is very aware and he's very willing to work um with this uh, with the neighbors and the development and the city, of course. Um, and I will put a note in there that nine B of the agreement does have um individual landscapes for the buildings could be submitted at the time of the building permit. And the building permit for the, any of the buildings has not been issued by the city at this time.
Yeah, that in itself is an interesting point because which, yeah, that's an interesting discussion in itself.
Yeah, I just think also if, if we don't approve this request, I, I mean, I get their concerns, but we're gonna get wrapped up in some legal stuff and it's gonna cost a, a lot of strife and and in this whole time that this is going on, we could get that planned, we can just be done with it and move on, hopefully, and, and hopefully everybody moves on and can be happy and satisfied.
All right, any other comments or questions, good discussion? If not, Michelle, would you call the roll, please?
Nora?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Zeeman?
Yes.
Drohoda?
Yes.
Colwick?
Yes.
Borker?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Item eleven, city administrator's report.
Uh, quite a few items this evening to um brief you on. Um, as you're aware, we've got some unfinished projects going on right now. Um, in regards to the Hickman wastewater treatment plant, um they're gonna paint the clarifier. Uh, we received word from our engineer that the clarifier's manufacturer and our contractor, Newverth, had discussed there's an issue with the primer not adhering to the influent. And, and Virodine, who makes the clarifier, has agreed to take on the care of the cost, and Newverth will get them pricing for that. So they're gonna repaint that clarifier, um but that'll be at their cost um under the, because the primer's not adhering to the material in there for whatever reason. Um, the plan is to take the entire influent well ring back down to bare metal, and then they're gonna reprime it and recode it. And this should ensure that we have a good coating system on the suspect part of the clarifier, and then we'll have an update on the schedule as soon as our engineer hears from them. So right now, Newverth are contractor at the time and the manufacturer of the clarifier are working together to get that taken care of, and there will be no additional cost to the city. Um, the wastewater treatment plant damage um to the plumbing of our infrastructure at the water plant, we did receive the insurance check for that for over twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, so that's been received and is done. Um, in regards to the torque claim um for one oh three Chestnut Street um at Harlan Homesteads and Herbs, um there was a discrepancy that the insurance agent found with the invoicing of the Paul Davis Restoration Company. So our insurance agent, as of today, is gonna reach back out to Paul Davis to make sure that gets clarified. Um, but unofficially, the insurance company has, they're gonna probably make the recommendation that we just pay this torque claim. Um, but depending on the dollar value, um our deductible is five thousand dollars for this type of item. Um, initially, we thought the invoice was just over three thousand dollars, but there was confusion because there's actually two invoices with the same invoice number. So I haven't clarified that today, but they said we actually owe, or that the property owner owes both, which is over seven thousand dollars. So if it's over seven thousand dollars, we'll just do the five thousand dollar deductible and our insurance company will uh pay the property owner. If it's under five thousand dollars, it'll come back to you with a recommendation just to not do a insurance claim and we'll just pay that homeowner directly for the damages.
So we, can we make sure in the future something's gone, going on over there that we do what we need to do to prevent that?
It was addressed also, is that?
This last time around's when like our contractor was taking out the roofs and the.
I understand that, but we know that something works going on over there that could affect that.
Right, and I think it was addressed that they could do some stuff too to help prevent this in the, in the future, so.
The property owners themselves could do some repairs.
Kelly, on that insurance claim for the, you said it was the one at the water?
The water plant, mm-hmm.
The water plant, what percentage of that, or was that the total? What percentage of the total cost, I guess, did that check cover?
Everything except for the five thousand dollar deductible.
Okay.
Okay, uh going on, we have had a couple of addendums to the Hickman Pickle Ball Park um bid process. Um, I just wanted to share those with you. One of the addendums is for the post-tensioned concrete quartz. So there's a change to the pros- project specification of the same. The other clarification was for building permit information. Um, and these, these questions need to be clarified as uh construction companies are bidding the project and looking at, and they'll call our engineer and ask these questions. Um, so in regards to building permits, um they do not have to include any building inspections with their bid. I mean, there are inspections that happen during the building of a city's project, however, the city absorbs those costs or we pay those costs to our inspectors as needed, um which is what we have done in past projects as well. Um, and the electrical site plan was somewhat modified um in regards to, people thought it was an alternate, but they wanted to make sure that electrical site plan was included in the base bid as you guys had discussed when you approved the bid at the prior council meeting.
One of the bid openings, that's next week, correct?
Yep, the bid opening is October sixteenth at two P M, and we will be accepting sealed bids um here at city hall until two P M on October sixteenth. Um, Terrace View Park, one more other item. Um, last year, the city uh received a tree grant um from the University Nebraska Forest Service. Um, and there were ten free trees that were awarded to us, and they were planted in Terrace View Park with the intention that they could grow there. However, the plans were not even uh conceptual at that point in time for the pickleball park or what the park was going to be. So, the plant, the trees do have to be moved, um but we are going to move them to another park with the permission of the Nebraska Forest Services we received the trees from. Um, we just have to wait for the trees to go dormant, so you'll see those trees being moved to Oakview Park, uh maybe a couple on the New Scotts Creek Trail if necessary. But originally though, we're just gonna put them in um Oak Park right now on Oak Street, so that's the intention there for those trees. We will save them. Um, upcoming meetings, uh planning commission, we do have a conditional use permit for a Casey's uh convenience store coming forward. So it'll be at planning commission on November fourth, and then city council will be of consideration on November thirteenth. Um, we're also at the time of the year where the city will be doing a needs survey for our clean water or wastewater and also our drinking water needs. Um, this is a uh usually an annual uh needs form we do for the state. However, they've changed their forms, it's now combined, it's biannual or every other year now. Um, and basically filling out the survey helps um N W, or sorry, D W E present the best possible information for state funding needs to the decision-makers, including our state legislators, U S Congress, and the Environmental Protection Agency. Um, filling out this need survey in no way commits the city to undertake those projects as listed or signing any type of uh S R F loan with the state or anything. It's just, here's what our needs are in our community, and this is what we're probably gonna go for, but we're not committed to that by reporting on the survey. It just gives our state a way to feel out how many projects are gonna come forward that we may have to fund, or do we need to go find more projects because we have more funding available, so.
Justin will fill out some portion.
Yep, yes, and we work with our city engineer, um with your public works director and myself, and we work through it and see what we need and what we have in those long-term plans. And I know we have some um very important projects coming for our water department, so maybe not solely the wastewater unless we go far into the future for the drying beds, but that's kinda population-based and volume-based at this point in time, so we'll get that need survey filled out and we'll get it presented to you.
Thanks, guys. That was gonna be my question, is what's the duration that you're looking out, kind of forecasting, about two years?
Two years, two years. We used to do it every year for wastewater and a separate one for drinking water, and now it's a combined report for them, so, that they want every two years. Um, and I do believe paving was starting in Edmund Estates uh this week, is that true, Scott? So you'll see some streets going on in Edmund Estates, which is nice, and you'll also see the beautification of several of our city trails. Um, we've taken some old asphalt trails out and replaced it with concrete, which you know is uh just, it lasts a lot longer and is more durable for our citizens to be on. So, we're thankful that we have uh those fundings to go ahead and get those trails fixed. Um, we do have a new staff member joining us on Monday, um October twentieth for wastewater position. Um, we'll get that announcement and he'll be here in the first meeting in November for his oath of office, and you'll get to meet him as well at that time, so.
So what's the story on the road getting fixed in the back?
Uh, the mill over late, it was supposed to start tomorrow, but when Wade and I were discussing today, I'm like, maybe wait until Thursday if they could, because Thursday and Friday is a non-school day.
A school.
Um, but again, your staff is notifying Norris schools when we have these changes, and the school is notified, the citizens, and of course, the residents that are affected by Infamous Rock and Walnut Street.
I mean, the sun set October tenth, so did, has it closed during the day?
It's been raining. Everybody likes the rain, it's just they can't do a lot.
It hasn't rained since last Monday.
Sprinkled today.
Huh?
It's sprinkled today.
It's trashed.
Anyways, uh, yeah, the mill over late should be started either tomorrow or Thursday, for sure.
I'm gonna say, I know the last meeting.
The Scotts Creek, the Creek uh trail, I see they're making a lot of progress and took, took out their trees on the other side.
They did. Yeah, and I know the two contractors are working together, so they're gonna be closed for the same amount of time for this dual projects to help save the citizens any more hardship or headaches with the, with their travel arrangements on Hickman Road.
Are the, are the funds good again? I, I can't remember this.
And Jesus.
Maybe.
Which one?
The, for the milling and.
Sixty-five. It was exactly what Wade had the quote for that was approved by city council, yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are they pouring the trails back the?
Six inches.
Right, yeah, okay, okay. I was just saying.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Paid extra to do that one and do it there.
Um, we're good.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Any questions for Kelly? No, I will entertain a motion.
Make the motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the city administrator's report.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mr. Drohoda, seconded by Ms. Zeeman to approve the city administrator's report. Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Nora?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeeman?
Yes.
Drohoda?
Yes.
Colwick?
Yes.
Borker?
Yes.
All right, item twelve, governing body comments, course, and council correspondence, uh the eighteenth annual trick-or-treat on the trail event. It's gonna be October thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five from six to eight P M in the Hickman Main Park, um.
Michelle, how many vendors do we have registered for the event so far?
I think we're ready for it.
Nice. Room for what, fifteen, twenty more? And there's always last minute.
So this is gonna be all around the trail and the park?
Yes, they'll start on um the trail um in Main Park uh by the basketball court, and then they'll go around the most.
The two north ball fields?
Yeah, ball field number, yeah, the ball fields. They'll go around the trail on the ball fields.
I'm just curious, why, why was it moved from?
Parking and street closures.
Okay, yeah, you said the past time.
So every year we have to close down a couple of city streets and.
Yeah, cause. There was a thousand people lined up on the streets.
It inhibits parking for downtown businesses, which we don't wanna do.
Yeah.
But there's more parking than at the park, and we also have a more allotment of spaces for the vendors as well.
Sure.
The only offset to that is that they need to bring their generators because we don't have as many electrical outlets available, but most of them have generators available anyways, and that always kinda adds to the spook of Halloween.
We'll see how that goes.
Yeah.
Uh, item twelve B, November eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, the city council meeting coun- cancelled due to Veterans Day holiday. Uh, will be a special meeting to conduct regular business Thursday, November thirteenth, so mark your calendars. And uh with that too, I will be gone the next meeting.
What was that, on November thirteenth, we're moving it?
Yep, and moving to the thirteenth.
It's gonna be eleven fifty-five.
And I will be gone the next meeting, so Mr. Wagner will.
Did you get that approved?
Yes, it's approved. Uh, he brought in the meeting, then thank you. So with that, we'll move to item thirteen, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Right, motion was made by Mr. Borker, seconded by Mr. Drohoda to adjourn. Michelle, if you call a roll, please.
Nora?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeeman?
Yes.
Drohoda?
Yes.
Colwick?
Yes.
Borker?
Yes.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.